I call this meeting to order and will everyone please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Those are some of the most awkward pledges. Anyway, okay, so hi, everyone, and welcome. So Nick, it's your turn to explain how people can make comments.
Yeah, so again, just in summary, we do have two public comments section, one happening right now, the second toward the end of the meeting, of two opportunities to comment. A few different ways you can do that. You can use the hand raise feature in the participants tab. That will kind of give me a little notification and allow you to speak. You can use the chat feature. If you do use the chat feature, please, and I guess in all situations, please feel free. And actually, we'd like you to use your name and your town of residence, just that we can identify you. So first and last name. Third way is that you could send a text message to 603-923-0973.
All right, thank you. And changes to the agenda? We have a couple, right?
Yes, so we would like to postpone the joint loss management item to our last meeting of the year.
Wow.
Right? The fiscal year.
Yes.
And we have two additions under nominations.
All right.
Jeremy Wright for Wellness Teacher, RMS, and Heather Schulman for Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment, middle school and high school.
All right, great, thank you. Um, all right, so public comments?
I don't have anything yet.
Okay. Then I guess we move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, last Friday was the last day of the school year for our students. I heard it was a good day all the way around. It ended with the seniors. It was a community sponsored event, I guess you could say. I walked out of my office in the evening and there was the police. And that only happens once in a while. The police were not there for me. They were there for our seniors. And so the police was there, the fire chief, and I think another individual as well. And so they led the parade that went down into the downtown. Lots of individuals from families and just community members in general were out and about that day and saw a lot of really happy people thinking that this was just a great time of community. And overall, I think that it went well. I got squirted by a senior with a super soaker. That was a little surprise, but I think that was, it was good that they were having fun. And so much for the social distancing, the water can go over that six feet. So the summer learning will be, we're doing mostly remote learning this summer for RMS and JGS, what is typically considered we call PEP. Most of it will be done through tutoring, either in as individuals or small group. And so that will be the stylistic approach to working with our students this summer in the elementary. The middle school, we are still working on trying to make a live event take place. So during the month of July, I believe for four weeks, we have the best camp. This is the last year that the Rotary is really taking charge of this camp. This is the 10th year. They've done a fantastic job. Tanya, the one who's really been overseeing it, should be commended for her dedication, her planning ability, and she's continuing at it. Right now, we're working with Roy over at Minnahead Not Christian Ministries to see if we can take advantage of that site over there as we aren't going to be able to utilize Franklin Pierce. A lot of personnel decisions have to be, you know, we have to shift around a little bit because of our current circumstances. And right now, it's still going on and we think that we can make this happen. The governor has given the guidelines, I guess you could say, for day camps. And we think that we're going to be able to, along with the cooperation of our bus company, we're going to be able to make this happen and stay within budget this year. The committee work, I mean, you know, school is over, but we continue to continue on and to press forward and to improve. There are some goals that we have not achieved yet. And some of the remote learning and the social distancing and so forth has prevented us from, or I wish to say prevented us, has stalled some of our work. And so we have been able to continue on with that work very recently. And one of those items is the Communication Committee. The Communication Committee was set to meet four times this year. It's met twice. It'll meet another time this Thursday. And the goal of this group is always to look at how we're doing with the goals and the action items that we've set. We've done very well this year with our communication goals. But one item that we wanted to add to this was to give them decision making, or at least some, within the process of choosing a bundle. We've talked about this a little bit through the course of the year. What I mean by a bundle is taking different communication tools, choosing a company that's going to be able to give us a good price and help us be more efficient with our communication. More efficient and more accurate and more timely. And so looking at grouping an app, so hopefully by next fall, we'll have a new app. The All Call System, whether it's the current one that we have, that's School Messenger, is certainly one of the groups that we're looking at. And also our website. Our website, Nick has done a great job. I commend Kim when she developed the website. They've really done a good job with building something that's given good information out with a website that doesn't really cost a lot, doesn't, it's very, very inexpensive to maintain, except that it does take quite a bit of the time of individuals. So we're looking for something that might have a little more balance and have a little more pop to it. So that decision making, if you read my superintendent's report, I do have three of the companies there. You can go and certainly online and look at those. They have, all three have some similarities. School Messenger, as I said, is one that we're usually using right now. In a similar vein, we are looking at learning management systems right now. So the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team that we have put together so far has been actively working on this today. First of all, they started by putting together a checklist of things that they're looking for, researching every single, about 12 or so, learning management systems to see what they had to offer, what their, what the ratings, I guess you could say, of them are, what their consumers report, what they offer for a platform for grading, all of that. And so they've narrowed it down to four, four learning management systems. And we were able to meet with reps from two of them today and we'll meet with the other ones tomorrow. And so we'll continue on and keep on reporting the information out that we find with that. But we did have some very good meetings today, some very exciting, exciting presentations and conversations that we had. The mathematics work that has been going on this year, both in the elementary and in the secondary, mostly curriculum work. They, during next Mondays, which is the eighth, I believe, June 8th, is going to be the Education Committee meeting. And we've got to kind of nail down a time on that one, hopefully around four or five o'clock in the afternoon. But the elementary schools will be set to present during that timeframe. And what they wish to present is kind of a summary of what was learned through this remote learning timeframe, the positives, the good, the things that could be done better. I think also, they wanted to share some of the math work that was done and specifically the process they used to choose some new content or materials for what we're trying to accomplish in mathematics. And so they spent all year, a little bit longer than we had originally anticipated, once again, because of our current situation. But the group came to a consensus and I'm very excited with the work that they've done. They like to move forward with Zern, which is not a massively expensive programmatic structure. It actually is a great structure with online usage and promotes the type of strategic design work that we want of regrouping, grouping, regrouping, moving students at their pace. And it adds what we haven't had as good tools. It adds an element of higher order thinking quite a bit. It aligns with what we would consider to be really the strongest curriculum materials out there from Eureka or Engage New York. Zern only goes through K through 5, but it matches up with the materials that we're currently utilizing more of in the middle school. So we would hope that through this process, along with getting our curriculum more defined from K through 8, that we would also be using materials that are a little more aligned as well. And that should give us some good results. Lots more happening, but we can report on things later on as we discuss graduation and so forth later on in the agenda.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ruben?
Yes, I do. For the learning management system has, so criteria have been developed for the must haves and the wants?
Yes.
Okay. And could you share with us who is on this search committee?
Yes, the individuals who are working on it, let me just, I gotta write their names down as I say this. So I got Heather Schulman and Amanda Dibble, both at the secondary level. We have our ELO Coordinator, Deanna Jackson, is on it. See, we have, uh, let me try to think. I don't have the names in front of me. I'm drawing a blank, I apologize. Tricia Layfield from JGS, also Bridget Wald from JGS, Wanda Meeger, who's RMS, and Caitlin McLaughlin at RMS.
No administrators?
Not at this point in time. But I do have administrators who will be involved in that as well. But they're not at this step of the process.
Are you going to be able to talk with other districts that are using these various systems to?
Yeah, we've looked into other districts. We're going to, we're continuing to look at districts that have experience with some of these. We found out that a lot of districts are using some popular tools that I think that we all agree aren't going to be adequate. There are others that, like today, we had a couple really exciting ones that fewer people use, but we do, we have found the places in New Hampshire and around the area that are using them. And so we will be contacting them and finding out. And actually, we've received some information already for some of the schools, even before we really started, about concerns or likes or dislikes about things.
Who, who are the primary users of the LMS?
Teachers and students. Teachers are the primary, students would be the secondary users.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, I particularly like the timeline for this. So you know that this is going to be not rolled out, but there's time. This isn't something we're going to be using next fall, so.
Yeah, our approach to this is, I think in the end, it will be a faster approach to implementation, but I think we absolutely don't want to force the issue in the fall. That would be a lot.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think that's great.
If I could ask, Ruben, will you be moving out of one of the current systems, like the Google system? Or what are the teachers using now that they'll be changing from?
Sure, that's one of the criteria, actually, is looking to see what's compatible with what. And so, one, the learning management system needs to be compatible with our student information system, which is web to school, unless we want to change that, of course. That would be a bit of a project. The other piece is that, yes, our teachers have been utilizing, especially through this remote learning timeframe, our Google Classroom and the other parts of the Google suite. And so these LMSs have to play well with at least the majority of that. The ones we looked at today, one of them certainly blends well with all of Google, the Google Classroom, everything that the teachers have already done. And one would struggle to use the Google Classroom itself, but would be able to import all of the work that would be stored in the drive. So, yeah, we definitely want to make sure that we're not having, having to have people do a ton of rebuilding, but to be able to build upon what they've already started.
Yeah, thank you.
Any others?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thanks, Ruben. Onto the student report. So I see both Patrick and Antonio are here. Who would like to speak first?
As I normally do, I will speak first.
All right, Patrick, go for it.
Nothing really to the report, other than I was in the parade.
Awesome.
I saw you.
That was great.
I was there.
Very good of you.
How was that, from your perspective?
I mean, I was just paying attention to not crashing into someone, so.
That's very good, thank you. Everyone appreciates that. So do you think it did what it was supposed to do?
I mean, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good. You know, we heard from an adult and now it's good to hear from a high school student and say, did that actually achieve what we were hoping?
What, what were we hoping?
Well, I think it was about what Mr. Duncan said. There's a community opportunity, a recognition, a celebration.
Then, yeah, we definitely achieved that.
Great. Okay. Any thoughts about where we are on the graduation piece?
I have no idea where we are.
It's coming up. We're going to talk about it, but I didn't know if you wanted to put in your two cents.
All I know is that it's coming up and I have to go pick up my capping gown Wednesday.
Okay, well, that's important, good. Don't be late.
I'll try.
All right.
I gotta be fashionably late or else it's not, it's not a true representation of me.
Okay, okay. Within limits, though, okay?
Okay.
All right. Um, Antonio, do you have anything you would like to say from your perspective about what's happened or what it was like the end of the year for you?
Uh, for me, the end of the year was quite relaxing compared to the rest of the year. So, uh, yeah, it was pretty easy to finish up everything that I needed to.
Uh huh. So what made it relaxing for you, do you think?
Probably because I was homeschooled for like six years.
Yeah.
So just working and doing school at home was nothing new to me, so.
So it was very familiar?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Does anyone have questions for our student reps?
Well, I guess they've, this is probably the last time you'll be with us, correct? So can you just tell us what your plans are for next fall?
Um, we're planning on going to Southern New Hampshire together.
Oh, nice.
Unonly enough, yeah.
Will you, will you live on campus? I mean, I know everything is up in the air with every.
If we're allowed to, that is the plan.
That's the plan?
Yeah, that's the plan at the moment.
Great, well, best of luck to you both.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming to our meetings. We like to hear student voices.
Yes, and so regularly and consistently, yeah. And any other comments for them or from them?
Thank you for, thank you for serving on the board.
No problem.
Yes, thank you.
See you on the talk.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, um, we're on then to the consent agenda. We've added two nominations, right, on this?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other, go on?
As I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All right, thank you, Laurel.
I'll second Laurel's motion.
Thank you, Alicia. And I'll do roll call vote. Charlie?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yeah.
Heidi?
Yeah.
Thank you, Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you, John?
Hi.
Thank you, Patty?
Yes.
And I say aye as well. So the consent agenda passes, seven, nothing, nothing. All right. All right, and then the presentation, the risk management report. So, sorry, I'm just getting feedback of me. Is anyone else getting feedback of me?
Little bit.
Little bit? Okay, I don't know why, it just happened all of a sudden, so. All right, um, so number seven on the agenda was a presentation around the risk management report, but at this point, there's still some pieces that we're trying to gather together. So that's going to go down to future item and we'll see that on the 15th, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we're on to item eight, which is discussions. We have five things under discussions. The first one is a draft of the school board calendar. I don't know if people have had a chance to look at it, I hope they have. Any thoughts, comments, things that like were whoops, that's not right?
Nope.
Okay. So I don't, that's not, is that something, we don't have to vote on that, right? It's just something that gets posted? Sorry, point, point of order here, I don't know. Charlie, tell me.
We typically do. We typically do book long these calendars, yeah, yeah.
Well, I knew we did on school calendars, but I didn't know if we did on our calendar, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I would maybe want you to improve the calendars a bit. Although we definitely, there's going to be some changes, so.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Charlie.
I'll start here a second, thank you.
Heidi? Okay, so Charlie's made a motion and Heidi has seconded to accept the school board calendar as it is there. Roll call vote, Charlie?
Hi, yes.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yeah.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you. Laurel?
Aye.
Thank you. John?
Aye.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. And I say aye. So the school board calendar for the 2021 year passes 7-0-0. Um, so the school board committee calendar, I put that on there. There's some Xs there that need filled in. One of them, you already brought up, Ruben, which is the Education Committee. I heard you say something about maybe four or five.
Yeah, it was more specifically for this particular one. I think during the school year, that would be tougher.
All right, so if we're meeting the eighth, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so six, eight, if the Education Committee at that point could look at these dates, come up with a time that suits everyone, that would be great. Then we can get that put into this and onto the website. The facilities committee, we have one o'clock here and that's what we have been doing, but I think we're changing that to 9:30 in the morning. So that is going to be, need to be changed before this gets published. The finance committee, there's a few Xs there, like what day and which week and things like that. And then the time.
So we're currently planning on the third week of the month. I think it's third Thursday at about one o'clock. And we'll start our first meeting, I mean, September. And then we're going to be having additional meetings based on the budget development calendar.
Okay, so scratch the July and August meeting and starting in September.
Well, if we, we may have to have some meetings based on certain things that are going on.
Okay, so we'll leave the July and August.
That'll cover the, the, the pour out for finance committee.
Okay, third Thursday. Thank you. Um, policy committee, you've got yours there. School Board Goals Committee. I'm not sure when your next meeting is, but maybe even if you guys just email with each other and.
We do, we've said that, we've talked about it and I sent it to Nick and I, we will meet in June and then we'll meet again in July, we'll meet again in August. The, the dates we hadn't specifically put down, but right now that's two, three o'clock on June 23rd. So that is set. I cannot commit to July's date until I meet with, discuss it with my cohorts here. So it will not be the, it will not be the third Tuesday just because of vacation schedules, so. And so, yes, July, August, September, and then we'll start meeting November, January.
Okay. That sounds great. Just make sure that Nick gets that so he can get it on. And then there's Support and Evaluation Committee.
Who's on that committee?
Me and Charlie.
That should be really hard to plan.
And a bunch of, and a bunch of other people. So is that a board committee?
I, I don't.
I mean, the policy, Nick, I guess we just looked at the policy and that wasn't a board.
That was not on that.
I didn't think it was.
Yeah, I just put it on there because it was listed on, on another document as part of evaluation. If it's not considered a board committee, it's, it's totally fine to come off there.
Yeah, according to policy, it is not considered a board committee.
Right, so there's several committees that aren't on here that aren't considered board. And I think if the committees, you know, if they want to be on the list on the website, that's fine. But I don't think that we need to.
Like the Wellness Committee and so forth.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, okay, so this, Charlie, help me. Do we need voting on this or is this just? So, okay, so this, Charlie, help me, do we need voting on this or is this just?
I don't think we need to bring that.
I don't think we need to vote on it, no.
Good, I didn't think so either, but I just wanted to make sure, thank you. All right, um, the next thing is board administration collaboration. We've been talking for a while now about spending more time with the administration, at working with them, and we also know that, you know, the strategic plan's a big deal, that. So if we could get a couple of days where we can work together. So I think what we need to do is, I mean, Ruben and I had some conversation about this because he always has some time with his administration in the summer. Um, I think if we can put a couple of days in that is in close proximity to the days that Ruben's going to be working with the administrators, that would be a good thing, where we can work together and then Ruben and I can work on what the agenda looks like. And if people have some suggestions of things, they can send them to Ruben and myself so that we can try and work that into the agenda.
So are we looking at July as a desirable time for this?
I would be looking at July for the desirable time if possible. What I'd like to do, I think, Marcia, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, would be to send out a poll, because I need to also lock in the dates for the admin at the same time. So if I can, I'll send a doodle poll out by tomorrow with a variety of choices or options so that we can get these set up, because people are going to make vacations quickly, even though, you know, yeah.
Or not.
Or not, or not.
So, yeah, that'd be great if you could do that.
I'll do that, yeah, we'll make sure that happens.
Is there any other like questions or anything right now about that? That anyone has?
Yes, Marcia. Just, I have no doubt that this will come up anyway, but one of the things I know we're all looking forward to is hearing more about the experience of the last couple of months and what was, what's been learned and, you know, what thoughts you have as an administrative team going forward, so.
Great.
And just as a side, some of that will start to be shared at the next education committee next Monday.
Yeah.
And you will advertise that time.
Yeah, once, yeah, we will do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else about that right now?
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Okay, next up then, item four on discussions is the finance manager. So Ruben.
Yeah, so basically this is, is under discussion. The idea that I'm bringing up here is to think about making, instead of having an accountant, or I'll use the hierarchical structure, so the business administrator, an accountant, we have horizontal with them, the accounts payable, the payroll. HR is, even though it's a little bit separate, is still within that mix. And so to go back to a model that I think the district had a long time ago, before I was there, certainly, that did have a finance manager type of business administrator role. And the reason for that is, and I don't know why it was like that beforehand, I think we've been doing well in the current model, but I think if we want to look down the road and make sure that we're building capacity to improve things with efficiency and transparency with our budgeting process, with our, with our HR, with our systems, with the facilities, I said already, because that's also kind of in the mix of that whole group, that we build a layer that's going to have some authority. So not just the business administrator with all overseeing all these individuals and having to do that and then do all the work as well, but having a finance manager who would be able to take on some of that supervision responsibility so that we can get ahead. And so what that would mean would be that it's really two purposes. One, to be more efficient and get ahead and to be able to make certain that we have the people and the places that we need when we start to really make some movement. Again, I'm more thinking about our facilities down the road as we're going to need to have a lot of work and follow up and oversight and so forth if we end up doing a lot more work. But also because with any organization, building capacity or building kind of your future, what's going to happen, let's say, for instance, if the business administrator were two, three years down the road, decided to, that, in this case, she would like to go and try something different, whether it be another school or whether it be a private industry or something of that nature, that this district has a backup and has someone who is being trained to be in that role. You know, sometimes that's not important if there's a wealth of business administrators or finance people in general out there. I just was called this past weekend by a superintendent who was asking me about information. I've been emailed recently as well about another district, you know, in this area that's having difficulties in that area, people can't find these positions. And right now, we've got a wealth of, of knowledge and capability that I think we should capitalize on. And we can do it with the current staff that we have by promoting within the accountant position to that role and it would be able to be done within the budget we currently have set forward. So that's the discussion, that's the, that's what I'd like to see happen. I think it would create a stronger business office. I think, I think the business office has become significantly stronger, although we seem to have difficulty at the payroll position. But just keep keeping someone in there year after year, it's not, not the position that I think, you know, everyone loves, but it's a, it would be helpful to have that type of dual oversight.
All right, questions, thoughts, comments, discussion, Ruben or Ruben, or about this?
So you're not proposing to add a manager in addition to an accountant?
No, 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 no. The, the accounting, yeah, the accounting responsibilities would be within that. It would turn the position from a non-exempt to an exempt position. A little more flexibility, a little more responsibility.
And would we advertise this position?
Well, that would be something that we could discuss, we could certainly advertise it. I'm proud to say that we do have, well, I, you know, I suppose, you know, I might be speaking out of turn and I have not had a direct conversation personally with the individual that I would, you know, love to promote into that role. But certainly, if we wanted to have that type of process, we could open the position up and do that. We're just very, right now, we're very fortunate to have, to have someone who could fit that role and very few people have them.
So do we have a job description for the finance manager and a job description for you, Colin?
Yes, yeah, I had sent just some draft information out maybe, you know, a month ago or so, but I can definitely send that back out just so you can see. I don't think we have it posted on the website because we don't have a finance manager currently. We don't post things that aren't currently in play, at least we shouldn't be. And when we did have a finance manager, I don't think we had a full-blown job description. I'm not entirely sure, but we do have one, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm probably going to hear the differences, what new responsibilities.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I can send both those so you can do a side-by-side comparison.
Thank you. Yeah, Ruben, you've mentioned this a number of times and I know it's something you've been working on. And so, yes, if you could get us some paper on it, maybe a sort of a mini organizational chart for that department, you know, just so we get our, can wrap our heads around it a little bit more clearly.
Sure, so a nice, strong visual. Okay.
I will just say that I think that the whole idea of like building capacity and having a strategy for, you know, as people move on in their careers, having someone who's there, ready, willing and able is a great thing. So I like that thinking, but.
It's nice, it's nice when the system is, and it doesn't always happen in public education, but certainly if you go to the business world, you see successful organizations, you know, they hire and promote if they can from within. And once they've built a system anyway, that can allow that to happen.
Right, succession planning.
Yeah, succession planning, exactly.
All right, any other, whoops, sorry, go on.
That's it.
Okay, any other thoughts about the finance manager discussion?
Amen.
Alrighty. Um, then the last item under discussions tonight is the graduation plans. And I know that you had written some stuff, Ruben, in your superintendent report, but I guess you're going to talk more about that?
Sure, you know, I know that Brett is here as well tonight, if you want to ask him some questions. I hadn't, don't mean to put him on the spot, but I'll do my best to, to talk a little bit, but he might have more up-to-date information than I. I know that he's been working tirelessly on this very unique plan and that has certainly been, it's been a great deal of planning and working collaboration with many community members. So he's been putting that work in and his team has been putting that work in and it's been great to see. I'll just start off by saying that, you know, generally I speak about budgets and, and that this is not going to break the budget. It is different, it is going to cost us a little bit more, but we've been getting the quotes that we've needed, things have been coming in at good prices. When you think of 500 chairs, you know, getting brought to us or us trying to carry over our 500 chairs and break it down and do all that kind of ourselves, we're getting a nice deal on that. I think we have someone who's going to be doing the sound and also will be doing the live stream for us and that's at a good price. And we've had a couple quotes to know that those are good prices. And then also, of course, most importantly, probably the porta-potties, making sure that we have those there and enough of them and the, you know, everything being sanitized and so forth. So I know that, you know, we're relying upon volunteers from certain groups to be able to help out with that. It's going to be a very structured event, the structured seating and both for the students and for those who are going to be able to be seated within, in this area that is going to be set up. There will, people will be because it is being live streamed. If they bring, you know, extra individuals, they can, they'll be able to be in their vehicle, which will allow them to also witness the graduation and maybe the fireworks afterwards.
So, can I say something?
Yes.
I would just like to applaud the students and the parents and the administrators who are involved in putting this all together, given that we didn't have any friends a few weeks ago. And now today, we've got something coming to fruition of this magnitude and complexity. So I'm really proud of our students and our parents and our administrators for putting this all together.
Amen.
Yeah, you're here. And I'm sure everybody's going to be safe.
Yeah. And I didn't know if Brett, you wanted to say a few words, if, if you wanted to? If not, that's fine, fine too, just kind of anything that I've missed, anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, thanks, um, yeah, it's, it's been a real team, community effort. And we just did the schematic to scale, so took a look at the airport and did the seating, including where the graduates will be, the speaker, the podium will be. So looking to do all the chairs spread out, six feet apart, ten-foot spaced aisles. And we can accommodate everyone that's in the plan, which happens to be four guests per graduate, set up for 90 graduates. And we are not certain yet of the number of faculty that wish to attend. Colleen's been collecting that, so right now it fits together. We're looking at two, possibly three, live stream formats. The third is not necessarily live stream, but it is an audio and that's through the FM car speakers. The other two, I believe, one will be YouTube Live and the other Facebook Live. That also allows a recording of the event. And, you know, right now, we're also still trying to work out Friday and Saturday with the companies because we are very vulnerable with the weather, being outdoors and not having any tents. So we're looking at options, everything from umbrellas to just seeing how much notification we need to give each company. So not a go, you know, letting them know, so. Is that's just a few pieces that Ruben did not mention because it's just a pretty lengthy plan. We had a meeting last week with senior graduates, going to have another one coming up and then send the plan, a finalizing to them this week. Any?
Yeah, cut out there.
Parents, attendees and graduates and have them sit of the plan. Whoops.
All right, move this over here. I don't know if people can hear me now, I apologize for the poor internet. Let me hook this up.
So just while you're getting yourself set up there, I'm assuming that because it's at the airport, that it's June 12th and it's, there isn't a rain date, is that?
There is.
Safe assumption, or there is a rain date?
There is, the next day at 11:00.
The next day, okay.
Yeah, and I apologize because it, it cut me out, I just tried to hook up a better internet feed, but we do have the rain date and we're working with the companies to see how much lead time they need on Friday or maybe Thursday so that we can not pay for two days. It would either be Friday or how much time will each organization need? So we can ask them to come on Saturday. So they're aware of it, for example, the police need eight hours of notification time prior to any change and that's fair, we agreed. And we're also working that out with other organizations. So, yeah, like you said, it's been a real community effort and it's still going to be a community effort.
Yeah. Harvey should be able to give you a good read on the weather too.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Yeah, and the, the updated plan will go out to the seniors and their families this week and they're going to ask them to return a response saying that they have both read it and agreed to all the stipulations.
Good. All right, any questions, thoughts?
I have a thought, I guess, and Brett, I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for your work in our district.
Oh, thank, I appreciate that.
And best wishes and good fortunes on your next step in life.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, right now, the, the focus are, are kids and I tell you, it was, it was really kind of life-affirming seeing the seniors on Friday in that parade. So I'm looking forward to seeing them tomorrow, even if it's a brief hello as they get their caps and gown. So, yeah, it's been a pleasure to do it for them.
Right.
And if I could echo just real fast since Brett is here right now, is that, you know, when you think about how we're ending this year right now. when you think about how we're ending this year right now, with this type of community involvement, with some student voice, as, as actually, some of the students, you know, were the ones who sent the emails with sketches and ideas of how things could happen, that, that has been one of the primary kind of goals that Brett has had as the leader of the Jaffrey Ridge Middle School and, and Conan High School over the last couple of years, is to increase and promote that student voice for healthier culture. And I will say, just a recent meeting with a student and his parents, they came up with a better ending to the graduation ceremony than we had planned, so we incorporated that in.
Great, terrific. Awesome.
Awesome.
All right, thanks.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you so much.
Brett, I also wanted, you know, just second what's been said, or third, or fourth. It's very much appreciated, the creativity and the effort that's going into this. We're going to keep our fingers crossed that the weather helps us, and thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome, thanks, John.
And Patty, are you gonna get in touch with Brett around the trees?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yep, we're gonna have a Plan C.
All right, so be looking for that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Bye. All right, um, yeah, so we're on to now action items. Last time, we had a discussion around the summertime teaching, and the support staff, and getting that echo again. Um, in the superintendent's report, there was some outline around costs and things like that, apples to apples, this, what we've budgeted, what we have cost, if it were roughly a normal year, what it would cost if we were to pass this in the future. We also had the last-time discussion around that this, this summer, being atypical, is still within what the budgeted amount is, if we were to pass this, correct?
Yes, so basically, and I'm, I'm getting an echo now, too.
Yeah.
Let me see. I don't know. Okay, so basically, in the superintendent's report, I've put two charts, and the first chart is, the accurate numbers are in the left column where it says budgeted. So, those are actual budgeted numbers. The numbers to the right in that chart are estimated, or kind of a scenario that would get us close to that budgeted amount, because year to year, the numbers of associates versus the number of teachers, that changes per site for a variety of reasons. The same thing with E S Y, which is not included in here, that varies the most. But it would, it would impact E S Y as well, from this teacher and associate standpoint. The, basically what we see here is that the, you have this general structure for best camp, for pep camp, and so forth, and then if we were to increase, as I'm suggesting, the $3 for teachers per hour, and the 150 for the associates per hour, you would expect, because it's roughly a 10% increase to the hourly wage, that it would be a 10% budgetary increase overall, as, as long as everything else stayed the same. It turns out to be about a 9.5% increase, so if you were to see those bottom numbers of what, like, for instance, we've budgeted for over the last couple of years, it was 53,000, some change, the number at the, you know, the change would look like about a 58,000, so there's about a $5,000 difference there when budgeting. And the reason why it's 9.5 and not 10% is because there are some thick stipends in there, like the lead teacher, also the director, Dan Venus has been the director over best camp for the last several years, and so he gets a stipend for that work. And we're not saying, let's increase those, so those numbers stay static in, in this, this model, I guess you could say. I think the biggest, I mean, the biggest reason is, is less about the, the overall costs here, because I think we can handle things budgetarily speaking, if we need to keep things, you know, fairly static, if, in, in other areas. The big issue here is that there hasn't been an increase in many years, certainly not in my time, and from what I understand, it's been a few more years before that. And so, in keeping up with what I believe to be probably the average to the lower end of average across the state, not necessarily around in the region, you know, probably average around in the region, would be to increase it to these, these numbers right here.
In order to get to a discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
I'd like, I'd like to move that we increase the best salaries for teachers to $32 an hour, and to instructional associates to $16.50 an hour.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
Second, Patty, thank you.
Is that a correct motion?
The motion that I would think that I would like to change it to would be just the summer instructional salaries, because I don't, like, it would be pep, best, E S Y, actually, that, that would be what it would be, anything that deals with instruction of students.
So, what about camp? Camp invention?
Yeah, same thing, anything that has to do with instruct- instruction of students.
So, I'm happy, I'd like to include the, all its summer learning programs in instruction.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. All right, so, discussion on this.
I have some questions. So, in the, in the items presented, I understand that this is not actually everything that is contemplated for this summer. It's only a snapshot of pep and best. What is contemplated here is, for example, for Jaffe Grade School, pep, six educators and six associates. Okay, but from what I understand, we're moving, we're going to be doing a private tutoring model this summer. Could you describe the roles of the associates?
Okay, so this, what I did here in these charts was take a typical year, this doesn't have, this model doesn't even look like what we're doing for this year. For instance, best camp, it's looking like we might have maybe one teacher or zero teachers, and, but probably have five to six associates, because of the structure of best camp this year. For RMS and JGS, in the area of tutoring, we might have fewer associates within that. If we have some tutoring, where the associates come into play is more within the E S Y, I think, this, for this year. This year is an abnormal year, it wouldn't look like anything that I have up there, but we'll be able to do it within the budgetary, within, within the budget that we have.
Are we doing any extended school year activities on campus?
We're not doing any extended school years, activities on campus, with the exception that it is possible that some of our E S Y services might, depends on what parents are willing to do and so forth, be done in a location of the school that is designated. So, there, there is a chance to have some limited face-to-face with some of our identified students, it is possible, but nothing else that we have planned. We certainly would not have the capacity or capability of doing best camp here. The cleaning alone, the, every, everything would be, would be tough on us, whereas the camp has the governor's guidelines to follow, and the, they have their own staffing, we would add some staffing, and so forth, it makes it be able to, i- it can happen.
Okay.
I will say, what's also different is transportation. We have the money in the budget for transportation for pep and best. We're gonna have to still utilize the transportation that we have budgeted, we won't have to go over it, but it will all be used for best camp, if best camp happens the way that it is, because of the distancing that we need to have.
So, do you have a sense of what your overall expenditure is going to be this summer, given the, the proposed salary and associated benefit increases? Or you're just confident that it will be less than what's budgeted?
Oh, well, I'm confident that it's gonna be less than what's budgeted, mainly because of, I mean, even if we look at the best camp structure that we have, it's going to be cut in half almost, from a salary standpoint. But Susan put out a, her recommendation that was at, which actually had some other costs in it, and through her tutoring process of, I can't remember what it was, like 14 hours per individual, or per student, or whatever it turned out to be, just within that budgetary line, and RMS would do the exact same thing. And so, I, we do have some, they, the elementary, they have planned out that it will be within budget.
So, I, I have absolutely no idea of the concept of increasing the compensation, and I would like to figure out a mechanism for not letting it wait six or eight years again.
Yeah.
So, as I look at Kerry's report, our summer programs total is around 114 pay, so we're talking about an increase of roughly $10,000 total.
Next year.
Yeah, and that we, it would be, yeah, you're talking about a 10% increase. It's not necessarily across the board, because some of our, what we pay for is...
That's salaries only.
Yeah, well, salaries last year was 90-some-odd thousand, yeah. I have the actual amount in the email somewhere, 94, 93.
Right, other thoughts?
So, could we maybe, for next, I understand you want to do this right now, but maybe for next year, try to find the sweet spot on the salary schedules and peg it to that?
So, thinking about a, I think you, you had brought this up last time, about, you know, finding in both of those schedules, a spot that would continuously increase each time.
Right.
I wouldn't even be opposed to doing that now, it wouldn't be too terribly difficult if you wanted to say that it needed to be around that area, but I do think that, that the, but we can do that next year, that's perfectly fine, I agree.
Well, if there's no other discussion, then I'll do a roll call vote. So, the motion was to, for summer instructional, to increase the pay to, what is it, 32? And to 1650?
Yes.
Yes, for the teachers and the associates?
Yes.
Okay, so, roll call vote, Charlie?
Yes.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yes.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yes.
Thank you. John?
Aye.
Thank you. Patty?
Aye.
Thank you, and I say aye as well, and so that motion passes 700. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, policy review, first read for three. So, Alicia, do you want to maybe quickly say, you know, kind of like, what the intent here, or the changes and why, or something?
Most of the changes are just, just based off of recommendations from the N H S B A policy database, so those are highlighted in red, or any clarifications that we felt bolstered the policies?
So, for G C R, it's presented as a, basically a new policy, but we have a G C R.
Yeah, so our, when we compared it to the N H S B A, they were significantly different. And so, yeah, I'm pretty sure this is the one, I believe, I'm going to put in the professional staff members, I believe that ours didn't include the amount of detail that N H S B A had.
I think it just puts it in sentences. I have no problem with changing it.
Yeah.
I just appreciate, I guess, seeing what is in place now, and what the changes are.
I'm not sure what, why, yeah, because we have been including our changes, so I don't know.
Nick, is it possible for you to quickly find?
Where the, I'm trying to look on my other computer. Where the other one went, where the other part of it?
Yeah, so Nick has it up.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, so, yeah.
So, I mean, ours says, will not perform any duties related to an outside job that impairs his or her ability to effectively perform the duties of his or position in the district, or might compromise or embarrass the full district.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I have no problem with the proposed, I, it's, I guess, just the process I would like to better.
Yeah, no, we're definitely working on that. It has certainly been a challenge to do this remotely, to some extent. There's a lot of screen sharing and swapping back and forth, and trying to work on Google Docs, though. I don't know where, because we have been, as you can see in the other policies, keeping what was existing, and then going from there, so I'm not sure what happened with this one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on any of these? Okay, then. So, this is just a first read. Thanks very much, Alicia. Number 11, Nick had the idea, and I have to say, Nick, I really appreciate you doing this. Because the policy, we see the ones that come to us that, you know, are being changed, but they're also doing reviewing all the time, so I appreciate you bringing those up and, you know, putting them there, and making sure that we read them, because it's always good to read and refresh.
Yeah, and that's definitely a process that we, as the policy committee, have been working on, trying to tighten up as far as tracking the reviews versus the revisals, and making sure that we have a good system to really know what has happened when.
Yeah.
And, and Nick has been really supportive in that, so thank you, Nick.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's helpful, it's actually kind of helpful for me, because I am going through all these policies and trying to clean them up a little bit, like aesthetically, so when the review process happens, I'm taking those anyway, and kind of creating a new, you know, not really new, but, you know, just kind of trying to stick to a format. So, also, it, you know, helps to show off that the policy committee, you know, that's a, that's a lot of policies to work on.
They're working hard, yes, they really are.
So, to provide a little history, when the policy committee started, up, six years ago, Charlie?
A while.
Five, okay. So, we took it sort of section by section, but one section that has not really been addressed, since the policies were generated in 2005, very much, is J, students. So, I don't know if that's on your calendar to look at, or?
Yeah, so we've been working our way back through all the policies alphabetically, and giving the most attention to the policies that are the, the least up to date.
So, J is coming very soon.
Very soon.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, um, number 12, committee... Number 12, committee updates, facilities committee, Laurel?
So the facilities committee has been working with Ruben and his team to get some request for proposals out to get some major work in the process of being designed and procured. I'm sad to report that the first RFP only solicited one bid. That was for athletic fields and work in the Cardinal courtyard. So I believe we will be going out to bid again for that after doing some research to see what made it unattractive.
We haven't started that research yet though, right?
I don't, I can't answer that question. Ruben would have to answer that question.
We have not started that research.
So there are two large RFPs out for bid right now. One is for forestry and land management. And I think that those responses are expected through 18. And the other is a request for proposals for architectural and engineering services due June 25. So we are waiting with bated breath to see what kind of responses we get. And we will be assessing those responses when we get them and probably pull in some other folks from the district to help review and perhaps even interview some of the respondents.
Can I just ask a question about our athletic fields?
Yeah.
So you're, obviously that needs to go out to bid again. You said, is any work being done on the field during this quiet time? I, you know, I don't know what the timeframe was going to be if we, you know, did find a contractor to work on the athletic field. What was, when would that work be done?
Next summer. The goal was to have the design done and quote solicited to bring, to have the prices taken to voters.
Okay, so during these months where no one's been on these fields, there is almost no one. Has anything been done to repair any, you know, what needs to be repaired just to perhaps go forward with this coming school year? I mean, I know we don't know what it will look like, but this is, you know, there's certainly.
The tennis courts are in the process of being used or just. As far as work on the fields, I mean, we have one groundskeeper. I suspect that most attention is paid to the field inside the track. I don't know the last time it went through a deep tanneration and compost, probably at least two years ago, if not three. But yes, that work should be, that work should be a routine maintenance kind of a thing. The, the, the lower field where there's a softball, diamond and soccer field, that field needs major work. It needs to be ripped up, regraded for drainage and developed for good grass.
And the RMS field is not something that could be updated, like with us. We would have to have.
Totally redone to bring that up, yeah.
And Heidi, the field within the track is currently being worked on. The, a good sized section of it has been roped off for the last couple of weeks where they're trying to replace grass and get it to grow again in a couple of bare spots.
Oh, good, okay.
And the, the composting is set to take place. There's a large pile of compost that seems to have been delivered in the last couple of days, I noticed today.
Great, okay, thanks, John.
That's great.
Any other questions for the facilities?
We are very looking much, we're looking very much forward to our next facilities man, meeting and with our new facilities manager.
Yeah, that's right. Yay. Okay, Charlie, finance?
Yeah, finance, I'm gonna do that. Just a couple of things. One is the district's trying to base, so results in approximately a $1,000 surplus. So we discussed potential additional expenses, including the early sick day buyback, the retirees, building trades project, facilities and parking lots. We also talked about some of the RFPs that the facilities committee has out currently so that if we get them back in time, we can apply some of that surplus to, potentially apply it to some of the costs associated with those RFPs. We also need to look at ways of funding from reserves and grants. So the committee may be getting together after we get some, but for the facilities delay. The other thing we talked about is the fall expenses and return to school and some of the potential expenses associated with that and then to consolidate and organize processes. And we talked about MBS compliance and that's something that's, is an ongoing thing. We'll probably be doing more discussion of that in the August to September time period. If any will be contained is necessary. But right now, we're looking at the third Thursday of the month because that's basically what most of the financial reports will be available for us to look over. There's slight activity in June through August. So next scheduled meeting we have is September 13. And then we probably will have some things before that, but that depends on the results of the RFPs and so forth. So that's about it.
Great, thank you. Questions for Charlie or finance?
So based on that report and our conversation regarding buyback, sick day buyback, don't we want to use FY '20 funds if we can?
I would. Ruben?
Yeah, I think it will be, I think it'll be who of us to utilize those funds if possible, if the board would be willing to allow that to happen. We have a healthy surplus. The amount of money, I mean, it's not exact, but it's about quarter of a million in buybacks that we could fund this year as opposed to utilizing next year's budget. The rationale behind that is not only for facilities work that we could be able to do during the summertime that we're gonna probably have difficulty doing in, within this year's budget anyway, and making sure that we have the funds for that, but also because we do have a lot of unknowns next year. How things are gonna look at the start of the year, are there gonna be additional costs? We don't know. And so having that, having that understanding that we have a little bit of, I don't, I don't want to call it buffer that, I don't, I don't even think it's gonna be a buffer, but having that would be helpful to go into next year. So doing that now instead of then would be great.
So we need to act tonight?
It would, it would need to act tonight, yeah. Carrie would need to have that information sooner than later.
So do you have that dollar amount?
The dollar amount that we have, and some of it's recently just shifted, is it's between, because it's not exact, it's between about 240,000, 240 and 260. It's 100, it's about, well, in the total number of buybacks now that we have, it's approximately 200 four, 206,000. But then you have to multiply that by 1.25 to get that number because of retirement and social.
It depends on taking the money or putting it into a.
Exactly. It could be, it could be, if someone invests, you know, put it into a 50, sorry, 403B, some of that wouldn't have to be. So it's around that quarter of a million.
So how do we word this so that we ensure that there's enough?
I move that we perform the sick day buybacks for retiring educators with fiscal year 20 funds. And any other sick day buyouts that have been triggered as a result of a new hire with fiscal year 20 funds. The amount not to exceed $270,000.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Good.
So did you, did you include all the buybacks?
She did.
You know, I said educators. Do we have any that are associates?
Oh, yeah, we do have an associate in there. I was.
Well, let's add the word educators and associates.
Teachers, you know, teachers and associates.
Retiring educators and retiring associates.
Does that do it now?
And any sick day buybacks as a result of all.
Okay, and John, you're seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Charlie?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Thank you. Heidi?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Thanks. John?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
Thank you. And I say aye, so that passes. Buybacks for educators and associates out of the 2020 budget, 700. Okay, and we have policy committee, Alicia, is there anything you need to add? I mean, you, you talked quite a bit, there's quite a bit we did already, but.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be next Thursday, the 11th at 5:30. We'll be meeting via Zoom again as far as I know. And we'll be working on the I policies at that point.
Okay.
I, the I policies?
Yeah, H, I comes after H. We finished complete with H.
Oh, okay, so just, the I policies were thoroughly updated when 2018? Ruben?
Yeah, we just did a quick review to make sure that there are no legal changes or anything that needs to be amended.
Thank you.
Great.
Then we'll be on to J.
Yay.
Yay. All right, so now we're up to public comments, number two.
I don't think there are any new ads from this time to last time. But again, Henry's feature for participants, 603-933-0973 to text or to, you can also use the feature.
Okay. Shall we do board matters? And if anything comes in, just give me a wave and we'll deal with, we'll talk about. Let that person have their say. Okay, so board matters.
I have a board matter.
Yes.
We need to assign two board members to participate in the decisions around the Serpents of Lincoln Memorial Scholarship.
All right, so we're looking for volunteers?
We'll volunteer.
Oh, thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, you're a trooper. I would volunteer, but I'm looking at the technology.
Anyone else?
Sure.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay.
I have a board matter.
Go on.
So the meeting this morning regarding the draft technology plan that I think was very positive.
Good.
And Ruben and his team are clearly moving what I think down the right road. I just wanted to talk about that, say that about that meeting. And then I wanted to mention a couple of things about our policy that these thoughts were triggered both during the technology meeting we had and also Ruben's superintendent's report regarding instructional materials and curriculum adoption. And I just want to remind everyone that the board has a role to play in curriculum adoption. And that if a recommendation comes to us in a presentation, we can't act on it right away. It has to wait till the next meeting to act. Okay, so I know you're keen to get going on.
Time sensitive then?
On this math thing, Ruben, but there's some steps we have to go through, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that, you know, the elementary school has some professional development planned. I was sent a contract day. I did not sign that contract knowing that there is a role here that we have to go through. Again, by now, we would have normally had the, you know, this all presented in the decision, but because of the processes. So I hope that, I'm asking the elementary to continue to move forward with any PD because it's not gonna, math PD is not gonna hurt. And the materials certainly are good regardless, even if they use the T word and down the road. But hopefully on Monday, that education committee will be able to hear and get a good understanding of the entire process and why they would want to go with that specific programmatic approach, not, not so much a program, but.
Okay. And then another policy, IJ instructional materials, which calls for the development of a plan. And I just wonder if that plan is available for perusal or is it in development?
Instructional materials.
Right, the, the, the development and procurement of instructional materials.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
Okay. And what?
I, I, again, are we defining instructional materials as supplies?
It is policy IJ. So maybe you can think about it and let us know. But what triggered my thoughts on that was all of the different software and applications the district is using with its technology. And there seems to be some overlap and redundancy.
Yeah.
And then lastly, ILBA, which is the assessment of educational programs. And I guess that that, that is different from curriculum and assessment, right?
I'd have to read the context of that language because educational programs could be, for instance, the connect team, you know, what they, what they provide, that's a educational program, I guess you could say. Or it could be simply bringing in people to provide instruction and social emotional things. Like you might have, I don't know, a reality check come in and do an ongoing program for that sort of purpose. Or a, or a program with the exact word of how it's usually used is more like the math, math program that we had at the elementary school, which is not what I think you're meaning here, but which is a math program, like the.
Right.
Math in Focus.
Well, so maybe just, the board in general needs to maybe revisit this policy and think about it, and we can circle back to it in a month or so.
We'll keep that in mind as we're reviewing those policies as well.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I have a question. Much like this is a difficult year for our graduating seniors, I'm, I'm concerned and curious about our folks who are retiring this year. Not an easy year to be finishing one's career. And I just wonder if there's anything, you know, planned to acknowledge for staff who are retiring.
Well, I mean, we, we always get something specific. Well, I mean, we, we always get something specific, usually something handmade within the region and present that as a gift. So that's certainly in the process right now. We don't, I mean, in the past, the schools have had their own end of the year kind of celebrations, and then there have, there's usually recognition during that timeframe. I've gone around, or I've had, you know, depending on the year, had some other people go around and speak or present those gifts. I don't know how we're going to present those gifts, whether we're going to be, you know, driving to their home and giving it to them or something to that effect. Usually it's a face-to-face type of situation. But that's where we're at right now. We picked out some nice items.
Okay, thank you. And also just, I think, I know, you know, this Friday is the last day for our staff, and I would like to, and I hope my fellow board members would agree, just express our gratitude once again for all the hard work that was put in during this difficult time, and I just would, would like that to be expressed to everyone that we know that it's been a huge effort on their part, on everyone's part.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, right.
Definitely.
Heidi, I'd just like to thank you for bringing that up. I think it's a great idea. We should make a fuss over them. I, I, I think the teachers have worked very hard. Goes without saying, the administrators, of course, had a lot on their plate too, but the teachers have worked very hard. And some of them, not knowing what they were getting into and, you know, but also the, the idea of the retirement, yeah, it's, it's, it's very important. I, I know there's a limit with everything that, that you're doing, Ruben, to how much you can get involved in that. And, you know, getting a gift is, is an excellent idea, but it certainly would be good to see if there's some way we can support whatever else is being done by the schools, if anything is being done to try and recognize retiring teachers. That would really be important.
So I don't recall this, but traditionally, has the board ever, like, written a thank you letter?
That is, that has not happened in my time. So I don't know if it happened prior to that in other situations.
I just, I'm, since we can't do kind of a face-to-face thank you, I'm just wondering if maybe a written thank you would be.
Would be very, very nice.
So I don't know if, I'd be willing to work on it if someone wants to wordsmith with me.
I'd be happy to do that, Marcia. This week is crazy for me. Next week is not, so.
Okay.
Um.
I can try to help us to, or help out to Marcia.
Okay.
Another potential idea that I could potentially help you guys out with is if you guys wanted to each, like, record yourselves saying, you know, 10 seconds to 30 seconds of something on a video, I could throw something together and we could send that out as well. Because then it would be a little more face-to-face. I don't know if that's something you guys would be comfortable with or not, but.
We can talk about it. We can think about that. That would probably be a nice idea. Actually, part of me is thinking if we could even do, like, you know, the Brady Bunch Zoom squares here or something. That might be fun.
Oh, that would be fun.
So, okay, so how about Alicia, Heidi, and I? We will start with, like, just kind of brainstorming a little bit and then then nail it.
Sounds good.
And we'll keep you and the rest of you informed once we get closer to nailing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. Um, anything else for board matters? All right. Future items, we've already talked a couple of times. The risk management report will be the next time. Also, there's going to be a presentation on social emotional data from the middle school, high school. And then in the future, future, we're going to have a group that's going to start looking at next year.
When do you, when do you envision a kickoff for that committee?
Well, I thought we had talked like at the end of this month.
Okay.
I know that report, the first reporting from the start committee, did start, the state is scheduled for June 30th. So I mean, I imagine there'd be some important guidance from that.
I hope so.
Okay, so, yeah.
We put out, we put out a survey earlier today as well to parents, and I think we've had about 170 people already respond. Just to get some information that can go to that committee for some decision-making.
We could probably, if, if the state's committee doesn't meet their deadline, we could probably do some productive work.
I think so.
Based on what, feedback from teachers, feedback from parents, just going through that and looking for patterns will take a good amount of time.
Right.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, we're going to get, try to get some feedback from students as well.
Good. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Laurel, thanks so much for that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Patty. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
Everybody.